This meeting is being recorded.
All right, you're in O L.
Cool, thank you. I will call this meeting to order at four thirty six P M. Um, the Halifax Regional Municipality is located in Mi'kmaqie, the ancestral ancestral and traditional lands of the Mi'kmaq people. Uh, the municipality acknowledges the peace and friendship treaties uh signed in this territory and recognizes that we are all treaty people. I will start today's meeting with a roll call and A V check. When I call your name, please uh ensure that your video is working and your microphone is working. Uh, just so we can make sure that text all set up. Uh, so I'll start down the list. Uh, councillor Jean Sainte Ma?
I am here.
Thank you. Uh, Glenn Babcock?
I'm here as well, and I think I'm going to close that blind behind me.
Thank you. Uh, Anne Sinclair?
Yes, hi, I'm here.
Thank you. Uh, Jamil Sino?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Kathy Stevenson?
Here.
Thank you, Oliver Keith? Cool, thank you. Uh, Nicholas Harris?
Here.
Thank you. And Rochelle Minette, that's me, I'm here, obviously. Uh, but I like to say it, we have regrets from uh councillor Laura Way, uh Celine Batur and councillor Trish Purdy. Uh, we'll now move on to the approval of the Order of Business for today's meeting. To our legislative assistant, are there any changes to today's agenda?
There are now things.
Great, thank you. Uh, I will invite a member of the committee to move the following motion, that the agenda be approved as presented.
Someone?
I heard two, we can take that as a mover and a seconder, I assume. Let's go as uh Jean Sainte Ma is the mover and Anne Sinclair is the seconder. Cool, so I will call for the question. All those in favor say aye or raise hands?
Aye.
None.
Cool, thank you. Oh, I like the little digital hand raised up, awesome. Uh, all those opposed, say nay or raise hands? See none, the motion has been carried. Uh, I'll now ask if anyone has a conflict of interest to declare as a result of any item or the item on today's agenda? See none, we will move on. All right, so the thing on our agenda today, uh number four, review of winter operations and service standards. I'll invite Stephanie Howitt, uh consultant for Deloitte to deliver the presentation. There are no slides, although we did get a handout, so I'm going to pull that up myself on my computer unless someone's sharing that on the screen, but I'll just let you take it away, Stephanie.
Thank you so much and I uh really happy to be here with you guys today and uh thank you for um for. I know it was a mandate uh as part of this agreement, but um being included and taking the time to organize a special meeting with regards to this. As well as I already had an opportunity to meet with Celine because she was not able to join and she also connected me to um Paul Vino. Um, who used to work for H R M and as an advocate in the um accessibility community and used to be very um involved with uh winter operations in particular. Uh, so um, yes, I did provide uh what we refer to as participation guides for you. However, I know there's some councillors that are joining us today that uh we have already had sessions with them. Um, but the questions would have been different um for that session. Um, I do prefer. And part of the reason we don't have a presentation for today, that this be more of a conversation. As opposed to a question and answer session or a presentation from me. Because the importance is getting your guys' perspective and your guys' feedback and I want it to be um as welcoming and safe um environment as possible. Um, so just to give some context and perspective as to why we are doing this review. Um, this is actually a refresh, so there was uh, the last review was performed in twenty twenty. So every five years, um it's been mandated by uh the municipality to review winter operations. Um, however, uh in particularly, this year, there was um an auditor general's report that came out with regards to winter operations. So on top of looking at items like the service standards and the operational practices. We are trying to help the team um implement the thirteen recommendations with the auditor general. Um, so if you, if you don't have access to that information, um you can find it on the web or be happy to provide you with a link to to that report. Um, to give some context to some of the questions that we're going to be discussing here today. Um, following my questions, um I will give an opportunity to the floor to you guys. Um, to jump in and provide any additional feedback or anything else, but as I mentioned, I prefer to these to be conversations, so I will. Find that um we will probably jump around from question to question as we go along. To also let you know, as part of this report, we do do a benchmarking exercise against comparable jurisdictions. Initially, the um their R F P had requested only Canadian municipalities, but in consultation with what I will refer to as the project team, so it's. A key uh key individuals who are involved with the winter operations. Um, discarded that given the fact that we do have a lot of changes in our climate here recently. Um, in particular, we are experiencing more ice storms um as well as freeze thaw cycles. That we might be a little closely related, in particular from a climate aspect to some American cities, so we did broaden our scope to include some American cities. So the um jurisdictions that we are benchmarking H R M against for Canadian locations are Montreal. Because Montreal um is thought of uh best in class due to their size of their operational budget. Um, and their their vast um access to contractors and and staff because they do staff up during uh winter events. Um, the other jurisdiction which was was a requirement is Ottawa. Similarly, Ottawa does require to have five-year refresh of their service standards as well. Um, and then Hamilton is the third location in Canada. The two locations in the states that were selected were Boston, Massachusetts and Portland, Maine. So I will maybe sometimes reference um some things that we have already found because we are actively completing that jurisdictional scan. Um, and if you do have any questions relating to the service standards from those jurisdictions and how H R M stacks up. I would invite you to ask me here this evening and I'd be happy to answer the questions. So without further ado, I will jump into the first question that would have been in your participation guide. So the first question um is surrounding um just in general, how you feel H R M currently does. In meeting the needs of all residents, that includes residents that walk, could have mobility issues or cycle. Or have other accessibility needs. So I think if you want to unmute yourself or raise your hand, please feel free to jump in.
We usually follow like a speakers list, maybe we'll start with the speakers list, see if folks have things to say, and then after that, it can be like a jump in, does that sound good with everyone else?
Yeah.
I'm not seeing any dissenters, so I will go with that. So we'll start off with uh councillor Jean Sainte Ma.
Thanks. Um, you've already heard from me, Stephanie, so I'll I'll keep it brief, but I do uh like the fact that the context of some of the questions. Um, is a little bit shifted from the last time we had this conversation. Uh, I really only have anecdotal evidence and I think it'll have a lot to do with where we happen to be, so District sixteen um generally has had pretty good service. There's only been a couple of gaps that I think can largely be addressed with some specific feedback around the thought process in mapping. Um, how a particular area is handled. Um, overall, I've actually heard from a number of people in the community about how good the conditions have been. Um, at least in this past winter, I mean, obviously, I don't have the history beyond that, so I only have the benefit of one winter operation season to have gone through. Were there some hiccups? Certainly, but they were not exclusive to uh accessibility. Um, I mean, it was really just, could you safely go out no matter who you were? And the answer was no, because it was it was just one of those winters where we had some extreme weather. And where we fell short a little bit as a municipality was doing um. Really actively reaching out to the community to better set expectations. On how the service standard does and does not apply under these extreme conditions. Um, because there are circumstances like we experienced this past winter where we had a tremendous amount of snow immediately followed by tremendous amount of rain. And then a deep freeze that all happened within a twelve-hour period. And so the service standard clock stops when the snow stops falling. But it doesn't reset just because of the two other conditions that followed it. And so residents were expecting the usual timetable to apply. Partly because our exceptions that are noted are not defined in our documentation. And so we need to, I think, conditionally put notices out to the public to say, all right, this is an extreme circumstance, first of all, so the usual service standards can't reasonably apply. Here's how we're expecting they will wind up being adjusted as a result of the weird weather that we just experienced. Um, and any effort that we can make on that front, I think, would do go a long way to communicating new expectations for residents. Um, and will allow residents to kind of reset what those expectations are themselves, so that they're not calling three-one-one or calling councillors. Um, to complain about things that none of us could possibly have fixed. Um, and I I think actively suggesting how they might. Reset expectations would be an important thing to do when we're going to experience extreme weather conditions like that more frequently. And at some point, it may result in council having to reconsider what those standards are and how they're articulated as a result.
Thank you very much for your assistance. It's great to see you here again to give a slightly different perspective.
Thank you. All right, Glenn Babcock?
Okay, I have the feeling that for most of these questions, my response is going to be one of the, one of the faster ones. Uh, so I live, uh although I'm in the H R M, I live in Porter's Lake. Uh, we have no sidewalks. We have very few bus stops and the bus stops we do have are just assigned by the side of the road with no shelter to clear in front of. Um, and I live in a community where we have private roads, so we have to contract our own snow clearing in the winter. Like a lot of places outside of the city, we're in one of those areas where there's only one road in and one road and that same road out. Um, and that road is actually Halifax's responsibility to clear. So what we've found a number of times, especially, well, my last couple of winters here, is that we have our roads cleared. And we can get out to the main road, but then we can't get out the main road because Halifax hasn't been around yet. Um. I don't do a lot of, well, I don't do a lot of uh bike riding or anything like that. I walk dogs a lot, but again, I tend to walk the dogs uh on the streets in our community, so. Um, being informed about the service standards within Halifax is is educational and helpful. Being on my condo board out here when we signed for a new contract for snow clearing this year. I think I may have been the first person to actually introduce the idea of service standards. And then I communicated to all the residents of the community what those service standards are, so that they wouldn't be complaining to us when things didn't go the way they wanted them to. So that has been helpful. Um. Beyond that, when I, you know, when I, when I am in the city, uh I've found it to generally be pretty good. Uh, I do know when we get a lot of snow and all the parking lots fill up and parking becomes more of a challenge. Um, you know, that's a challenge for everybody, but the service standards, uh at least the last ones that were in place or the current ones, I guess. I think the service standards only apply up to fifteen centimeters of snow because. Once you get above that, it gets really difficult to find places to put it, so then we all have to live with it. So, uh, like I said, a lot of the questions that you're asking, my my experience with accessibility, being able to get around is is very different out here and. In the country as opposed to what it would be in the city. Um, but if there's something I can contribute, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Glenn, and I I'm sure that there will be be aspects that will be um valuable to get your input as well.
Thank you. Uh, Anne Sinclair?
Yes, uh, hi. Uh, yeah, no, I was just um reading the letter that has just came. Um, as in, as I think of later attachment to the meeting package, so um I'm just not sure what. Like I have some comments on the question, but are we also to be reading the letter and commenting on the letter? Um. That's just a procedural question, I guess.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Hi, yeah, good question. So the letter was correspondence that was submitted by a resident. Um, that's not necessarily something that would be read out over the meeting, it's um circulated for reference for all the committee members. I don't know if that's clear enough or if that answers your.
Well, for for, so yeah, thank you, it's circulated for reference. Um, but then what then what will happen to it? I mean, it's a really good letter with some really good information. Um, that now that I know it, I'd like the. Deloitte people maybe to know it too about it, but.
So the Stephanie has was on the would have been circulated that letter as well. Um, she was part of the or was included in the meeting package distribution, so when that was circulated yesterday afternoon. Um, Stephanie or Deloitte would have access to that that correspondence as well.
Is there any specific um information that you would like to call out and with relation to to that to that letter? Um, like I said, I I prefer that these sessions be a conversation as opposed to me just asking a question. Which is why I I welcome folks to unmute themselves as they see fit. Um, so and. And you know, if you would prefer to discuss something with reference to that. To that correspondence, and I apologize, I have not reviewed in depth that correspondence. Um, but if there was something you would like to discuss in particular in relation to that, I would welcome you to 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 ask or or reference it.
Uh, yeah, thank you for that opportunity. Um, I I can't really um give a useful comment, I don't think, because I've just scanned it, because we just received it. So um, I just think uh, I I'll try to answer the question itself and. And and I'll reference something that was in the letter too, so um from from my perspective, the um is just anecdotal evidence of how things are. Um, in my um wandering around mostly central areas of Halifax, I have found that um it's very. It's really varied. Some streets are so much better than they ever have been and some streets are worse and remain worse. Um, so what I found, what I found helpful that people do and I think maybe should be encouraged to do is to call three-one-one and that's my reference to the letter, I agree with the. The author of the letter, that when you call three-one-one, it's, there's been um from what I've heard, excellent um response to that, so three-one-one. Seems to work for, at least for some people. Um, and the other thing that I have found helpful was to hear from the councillor in my area. Um, after storms and the councillor is letting people know when to expect. And this goes back to um Jean Sainte Ma's comments too about letting people know what to expect. I found that a helpful tool to to let people know um what to expect and when.
I apologize if you can hear me clicking away, it's only because I am making notes as you speak to make sure um that I. I'm taking a mental note and we'll have the recording, but I'm also just want to jot down, so I hope you don't mind if I. I'm jotting notes while you speak as well. And thank you for that, Anne, as part of um this review, we have had. And um councillors can talk about, we have had in full conversations about. Three-one-one, the service that three-one-one provides as well as Answer three-six-five, which is the off-hours um service um and gaps. Uh, you know, data um that they are collecting and reviewing the data, so it's very helpful.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Stephanie, to interrupt you. I don't know if anybody else is having trouble, but. You're going, sometimes you're very clear and sometimes it's it's too garbled to understand. I don't know if it's at my end, can others say if they're having trouble?
It's also, I'm also hearing it, yeah.
Okay, let me, maybe if I bring my laptop closer to me, is that better?
So far.
That's good, that's good right now. Yes, thank you. Yes, sorry to interrupt you.
It might have just been my microphone, unfortunately, you know, sometimes when you have these portable laptops, if it's, if I'm further away, that might have been the the issues, because I. I have multiple screens that I'm looking at right now so that I can capture your um some of your responses here. All I was saying, Anne, is that um as part of this consultation, we are looking at three-one-one. Uh, as well as we've had some conversations surrounding the contract um after hours, Answer three-six-five as well too. Um, so there has been some suggestions of ways that we could further improve the service that's offered, but uh thank you very much for that feedback. That um, really appreciate that.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Jamil Sino?
Hi, Stephanie, thank you for this. Um, I think just, and I've been living in Halifax for about twenty years and I think winters have especially been miserable, but. Barring climate change, I think post-COVID, or like post-two thousand twenty, I should say, there has been like a shift in the way. Snow has been cleared over the past few years to a point where I think it's. I can't really recall the reason behind the shift, but they are now waiting for specific timelines to start clearing roads and to start clearing sidewalks. And I noticed that there has been an especially like, it's it's been slowed down a lot for people to get access to sidewalks. I've been noticing that while snowfall is active, roads and sidewalks become like less and less accessible to people. Some people are on the roads, uh there's, well, there are many cars that have been drifting recently in in recent years. On these roads as the cycles start to freeze and thaw and freeze and thaw. But my main concern with that is that the. Method in which this the city and the municipality and by extension, I guess, the province also tends to deal with this um with with this problem. There is a whole lot of salt being used on the grounds and on the sidewalks, which cannot be good for like water downstream. It cannot be good for, you know, the the conditions of the road, the conditions of the sidewalk, it's been costing a lot more in a sense where. You, especially in the past few years, we've been seeing some much deeper potholes that have been, you know, destroying a lot more tires on the roads and on the highways. Um, sidewalks have become especially unbalanced after the. Uh. Equipment and machinery are shoveling the snow off of off of sidewalks. Because they are nicking them or removing them off of place, so this becomes an issue for people who use wheelchairs or automatic wheel uh or automatic wheelchairs. Or people with mobility aids just in general. I also tend to notice that. It, the work is done in a sense where it's like a checkmark is is taken off of the list, so for example, let's say Willett Street. You'll do it once, but then if it snows again. Even if it's just a little bit of snow, it will tend to freeze over and it the the sidewalk won't get revisited. Um, but if it does get re, if it does get, if we have a an instance of a lot of snowfall coming down in a short period of time. All these equipments are doing is they're creating a single lane. And on sidewalks specifically, and sometimes, you know, people who are using mobility aids now have to like share a single lane sidewalk with people. And that's no problem when you can just step onto the grass, but when you're stepping onto three or four feet of snow and now all of a sudden your foot sunk into. The snow because it's not as compact as you would expect it to be. It's causing more issues for people who are on, who are now also walking. Um, similar up to what Anne just said, I actually without, I actually want to go take a quick look and at this. Letter that was sent our way and a very big issue is there seems to be no staff. Um, that double checks the work that is done by contractors. So for example, a contractor is going to be clearing a road and they're not in charge of the sidewalks. They will most definitely be pushing all of that snow to block sidewalks and creating mountains which stop people from being able to get on and off these. Like get to and from like their destination because they have to find a way around this new mountain that has been created, right? So it's almost feels like it's, I'm contracted to do X. And I will only be doing X and not really focusing much more on like the impact that my work has has been uh like has uh really. The impact of my work. Uh. Oh, I don't know like how futile this conversation is now with how quickly like climate change is coming at us, right? I think like the 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 wet cycles and freezing overnight is still going to be an issue. And I think it's going to be something where it's like if we are expecting or experiencing any form of precipitation, what sort of solutions can we look at? I know that there have been other cities that don't rely on the use of salt for clearing um. Or for 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 clear or like to ensure that this the water doesn't freeze over at zero degrees and to lower that 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 uh freezing point. But there have been other like more environmentally friendly solutions such as, you know, I I've seen some some cities use like pebbles or rocks. Or gravel, right, to create, so if if things are still going to be frozen, right? It still creates some form of um texture for people to be able to like hold on to without having to really need any extra aid, but also. Fix to sort of like look into what it would be like for people who do use mobility aids, like what's what sort of solution works best for them. I don't use one myself, so I can't really speak on their behalf, but it's definitely an avenue worth exploring, because. You know, all of this environmental aspect, all of this, all of these environmental effects really do go and like. Effect the most marginalized first, right? And that's part of accessibility, and so we should start exploring other ways of like ensuring. You know, that we have less rust on our cars and less potholes on our on our roads and sidewalks are remain flat after a winter period, right? But uh, those are my main concerns, I think, over over time.
So to unpack a couple of those pieces, as part of our review, Jamal, we are actually required to update the salt. Um, management plan, which will be a public-facing report um to the required, it's a it's a federal standard requirement. Um, so we're working actually with an engineering firm called East Point, which is a local engineering firm here in Halifax to help us develop um that. As part of that, the project team has requested um that we include procedures to change a road. From um one material to another, because we are aware that there are some runoff issues in certain areas. Uh, some of the councillors had addressed it in their specific districts. Um, and so that will be part of the protocols as well too. Um, we are as part of this report looking at materials usage and the materials usage of those other jurisdictions, because you mentioned. Mentioned the change in climate, um so the amount of potential brine, uh which is the combination of of um, you know, a a sort of a salt solution. Um, and that could be potentially used, and I did have some conversations this week as I met with the winter operations team. For the contractors, that was a gap area that was identified in the auditor general's report. Um, of there not being enough performance of the contractors. Um, so we are looking at short-term mitigation strategies, so something that could be implemented for this winter season. Um, to to help with that gap area as well as more longer-term plays. They might look at technology and innovation to help with data and reporting and overall trying to make a greater impact long-term. With our ability to meet service standards. So a few 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 things there, um and appreciate all of that that feedback as as well. Is there anything else you maybe you wanted to add?
Just uh um that follow-up, basically, how can we keep track of the this unfolding since, you know, there's still going to be more work to be done?
Um, well, as part of our recommendation, we are going to develop a roadmap for implementation. Also to let you know that if there is a requirement change to service standards, it has to be approved by council. So only council can make those changes. I mean, obviously, we can make recommendations in our report, but it would have to go to a discussion with council. So a lot of these things will take time. However, I will let you know that from the auditor general's report, about uh sixty to seventy percent has already been actioned on by the winter operations team. And like I said, um there will be a short-term um sort of phased-in approach as part of our recommendation, which might include data collection. That's sort of more of a manual aspect, meaning it might just be on a document or put into an Excel or some sort of a form. Uh, but then there would probably be a longer-term play that might look at technology advancements to integrate into the um city works application that we we use here at H R M.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. No problem.
Thanks. Uh next on the list is Kathy Stevenson.
I don't have anything except personal experience to add to this, so I don't think that's what you want, is it, or do you?
Of course, I mean, I live off Spring Garden, so I've got personal experience too.
Buckle up because I can't straighten my arm out anymore because I fell on the sidewalk and broke my elbow. So I don't walk a lot on the city streets. There's a trust issue there now. Um I just, it just had never been plowed for the entire winter. It was in Dartmouth, the area going over park while. I laid there for forty minutes until somebody finally called an ambulance because I guess the side of your body goes into shock and then I had frostbite. It was a fun morning. So uh I don't walk hardly at all now. I now live in an area where we have private contractors. That do the plowing and they're excellent. I do have another story, however. Um it's with an elderly relative who lives right in central Halifax, as central as central gets. And this I don't think is covered under you though. They do not return the green bins in trash cans. To the front of the homes. They will put them a block up. And the only way that this elderly relative could get around that is she was forced to pay them every week by leaving money in an envelope. To bring and return the trash cans. And so she was also losing the trash cans because city would come by and find their green these green bins floating around a street. Which has very few um residents on it and take her. Her green bin or take her trash cans discarded or whatever, and it was costing her a lot of money. So there there's an issue there. They won't. Put the trash cans, the green bins back, and there's no way to get to them in your middle of, you know, if it starts snowing over, it's slippery without the person having to go out, but. That's my only complaint. Otherwise, living where I am now, it's pretty good, but it's private, so.
Thank you, Kathy. And unfortunately, no, um garbage collection is not part of the scope of the winter operations review that we're. We're doing, but um I do know that they're that they're um your counselor, uh whoever. Um if they're right downtown in district eight or nine, um that uh they could probably help with that, so.
Listen, but that that's all I've got. I I don't go out much of this. Since I broke my arm, I stay pretty much at home. I work from home. Sorry.
Thanks Kathy. Uh Oliver Keith?
Thanks for show. Can you guys hear me okay? Perfect. Um thanks Stephanie. Uh I I guess um. My uh point is also a little anecdotal as well, and I also don't know if this would be within uh. The scope of what you're looking for, but um I guess a point of grievance for me is that I think snow removal. Kind of takes often like um, like I guess like almost like a functional or consumerist lens in that like. Uh it's intended to remove things to get people. Like work or you know XYZ, uh and I think sometimes that leads to the. Uh other important spaces like green spaces. Um you see, green spaces are typically very inaccessible in the winter from a accessibility perspective. Uh I've seen this myself, we're trying to find uh uh someone mentioned earlier, like a space that you can trust. Uh to be open to you is very difficult. Um I guess my point then with in the HRM, it would be at least in my view. Really uh appreciated if there was a way to know or at least see green spaces. Uh and community parks and uh outdoor areas. Uh that didn't serve a means of transportation or a means of uh getting from point A to point B, but. Still served as a thing that could be opened for uh. People to enjoy that's accessible at the same time. Um.
So uh some it would it would depend, um you know, what the area is, whether it's covered. As something that is related to uh the municipality or not. Um part of the crew that works for parks um for the municipality actually in the winter go over. Um and work on the winter operations, so it is for the in-house, the same staff. Um so it it would depend. There is interactive um maps. That show you the priority routes and what is currently covered as part of the service standards, which I would be happy to. To forward to Elizabeth, which she can share with you so you can see. But again, the counselors set these service standards. Um so if there was going to be a change in the prioritization, uh those conversations. Uh would need to have sort of a fulsome discussion. However, we are uh potentially posing some of those things as part of. Uh this recommendation. Um I will let you know that currently HRM service standards are quite high. In comparison to other jurisdictions and there we do have problems now. Um with having enough staff, both from a contract and in-house perspective, to complete the requirements as is. Um so you know, I'm not sure, but again, those are discussions for council. Um uh that it would probably be a cost affiliated uh with if it's not already included. Um by a a provincial or a municipal group uh with doing additional work.
Yep, I agree. I can um understand the resource uh perspective in that it would be beyond scope, especially beyond council, but uh. I don't know, anecdotal, thought I would mention it as well. Thanks.
Thanks Oliver, and you know, I do love still trying to go to walk in uh Prince Pleasant Park in the in the wintertime, so. It's good to, it's good for the brain sometimes to get out even when there's snow, but Kathy, I can understand a slip and a fall. My dad's a. Or he just retired, but an orthopedic surgeon and I think his uh call schedule tripled during the winter months, so.
Uh all right, next on the list was Nick, but Nick had to take off um quickly, so the next on the list is me. Um I wrote down a handful of things, um some are sort of the like anecdotal, like here are things I'm noticing that are like, you know, specific issues. There's a couple of big picture things that maybe this is the place to share it. It might also not answer the first question and answer later questions. Um but some of the things that I noticed, like just last winter specifically, um a lot of the time like snow clearing uh to create parkings. Like ro- uh street parking is clearing all of the parking spots now into the accessible spaces. Um because usually the accessible spots are towards like the end of a block or like the end of a road, uh and so for. I guess like they're going from one end of the road to the other, and so the assumption is if I just keep pushing it and I remove a spot, it's like. Well, it's winter, it happens, but the spot that they're removing is the accessible parking spot, um which sort of defeats the purpose of it being accessible. I mean, if it doesn't exist, it's not accessible. Um so that's like a specific thing that I noticed. Uh not once, but like several times last winter um and was like personally affected by it. I park in those spots. Um and then was like, yes, I'm not going downtown. Like, guess I'm not going to the place I'm supposed to be going right now. Um the other pieces around like curb cuts, I notice a lot, a lot that curb cuts are just, and I'm sure this has been noted by so many people. Over the years, I'm sure three one one gets tons of calls about it, but like I can vividly remember I was driving uh like. On or around Quinnpool and I watched like and took a photo of like two um uh like. Ambulatory like community members who were helping somebody up over a curb cut um, cause they were using a wheelchair and they just like couldn't get up. And they were stuck in the middle of the street, uh so that was not ideal and like is a safety concern. So there's, you know, the curb cuts are a whole thing. Um also like just the the height of the snowbanks getting piled up even like against the like at the sidewalks is. Making it really difficult for people to get onto the sidewalk from the road, so any street parking sort of becomes like a danger. Um and like not accessible, like I can get up without a curb cut, but I can't get up in a snowbank, and so then I'm just kind of stuck there. Um or I have to walk on the road to like get to hopefully a curb cut that actually was uh plowed properly. Um. Wrote too many notes here and they're all very messy. Um. Something that I noticed a lot of last, I mean, uh the ice thing is a is a a mess, obviously. Um and I don't know what the right answer is here, cause I know that we cannot control the climate. We can't control these like flash freezes and the melting and the rain and all that. Um but. And I would, this is like a question, I guess. I'd love to know what the stats are for falls in the last like couple of years, especially last winter. Um my partner fell, I was with them, they split their hand open and I had to take them to the hospital. Um and ironically, and this is probably not an HRM snow clearing thing, but I feel like it needs to be said, the hospital parking lot didn't like was also full of ice. And wasn't cleared properly. It was just a nightmare. Um yeah, and so then, of course, like I don't want to go outside more if my partner can fall. Who is, you know, not uh disabled, at least not physically, um like I'm definitely gonna fall and that is scary. Um yeah, and then I guess um. I guess in terms of like the bigger picture things, um something that um councillor Saint Amal was saying before is around like the service standards. And what we can like reasonably expect to happen based on the standards that are set, and I think that like. The standards should reflect like our reality of what's happening. Um and so if the standards are like when it snows a little bit or when it snows a certain amount, so like it gets cleared in this amount of time. Um that's not what last winter looked like. In like some cases it did, but in a lot of cases it looked much more extreme than that. And so I feel like our service standards should actually reflect the extreme weather that we're having. Um otherwise, like, nah, we'll never get anywhere. Um I think also, uh you know, when it comes to the um like the slipping and the falling. It feels like an accessibility issue to be causing disability and with so much fault, like so many falls like that that literally causes disability. And so if we can prevent disability that is preventable, like that is kind of an access issue. Um and oh, and then the last piece here, and this is kind of just like a food for thought thing, I guess, uh but I maybe the HRM has something to do with it. Um maybe, cross my fingers. Um part of the issue with the clearing not being adequate is that. If we have jobs outside of the house, we are still expected to be at them. Like we have to go out, some of us have to go out. Regardless of if the city is making that easy or possible or safe for us to do. And so I guess this is. These are big picture things and I don't know how much of that is going to be sorted out in this like very specific um review and project, but I do think that needs to be stated that like. If we are, you know, minimum wage workers, if we work outside of the house, if we don't get to work from home, if we're not retired. We have to go out in this weather and in this in the state that the city is in, um and we don't have a choice and it's not safe for us. And so that is scary and and kind of unfair um in a lot of cases. So yeah, and I see uh councillor Saint Amal, you have your hand up. Maybe you also have a reply to me.
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to point out, you you hit it right on the head. I mean, the the like having the. Exceptions also reflect the reality that we're in, I think is is where my head was uh coming into this last year and experiencing my. My first winter almost right away after being sworn in. I didn't really know for sure. Uh how literally to take the service standards and how much flexibility there is on either end. And in particular, when it refers to exceptional weather conditions, there's not really, there's not a a high degree of specificity in there, and I guess. In part, that's by design. I think I can understand why that would be because um so many variables go into that. But it it wouldn't hurt even when there is flexibility built into the language for us. Even internally, it I mean, it'd be better if it was uh available publicly. But even internally, just having sort of the the conditional scripts that say if this is the condition, then this is how we communicate out to residents. Um what we're doing about it, um and then how to modify their expectations accordingly in one environment versus another. So sidewalks versus roads or around schools and around hospitals versus the rest of the areas, like anything that we can do to to help alleviate those concerns. Will go a long way to allowing people to figure out and modify their plans, figure out how to get around based on the conditions of the day. And I think that would probably wind up helping a lot, even if we can't possibly work through every if then conditional. On the basis of conditions that we can't predict in the moment.
For sure.
Thank you, councillor. Um and to let you know, um his session that he was previously in. Um there was a large focus on communication. Um and so subsequent to the session that I had with him, I have not one on the heads. I reached um um communication and having have relayed some of the strategies um that was brought forward by the council members. Uh so we are working through um what what are, what does that look like? Um to help with transparency, also to help with extreme weather events um and things. And to let you know, Rachel, um I am meeting with the head of parking tomorrow to talk about a little bit about accessible parking spaces, but. Other parking um things as well, like parking bans, um and uh. You know, parking fees and uh parking stations as well. But included in our part report is going to be uh discussing accessible parking and what that looks like in the winter. Um curb and corners have been brought to our attention. Um and I will let you know that they did um hire an additional hand crew team, which means people that come out. And shovel uh for in-house, and so I have a meeting next week, um cause I met with both in-house and contract supervisor and crews. Um yesterday and Monday, and so I have a meeting with the senior leadership team of winter operations next week. So that we don't have to wait until my report is finished um to talk about some quick wins or strategies. And even looking at redeploying some of the staff because they had some great ideas to help with accessibility needs. So I actually had a conversation with the head of winter operations right before I hopped on this call, cause he knows I'm joining you tonight. Uh so he's very excited to hear what comes out of this session.
Oh, great, yeah. Um I feel like there's something else that I thought, oh, I guess just in response to the communication piece, like I I definitely agree. Uh the public needs to have more information about what's going on. Um literally, one of my students, like a couple of weeks ago, uh who uses the wheelchair. Uh said that, cause as part of the class, well, this is a aside, one of my students had said, um. Who cares if they're telling us about the plan that doesn't work? So I think like the communication piece is super important, but also communicating something that is. actively like being worked on and like works a bit better and and things that actually like meet people's expectations to a point, I think is also just as important. Um yeah, so I'm all for communicating, but yeah, I think it's also about communicating like. Here's what you can do if this doesn't meet your expectations, or like here's what you can do if this is a problem for you, who you can call. Um yeah, especially like it is very much a class issue of like if you're met, if you have to be out, you have to be out and there's no. Choice of that and you're more likely to slip and fall and then become disabled and then have more class issues. Uh so just it it's a a cycle of poverty essentially is what it turns into. Um. Yeah, uh anyone else, I I know that we kind of were going through the questions, um but also I don't know if we answered some of the other questions. But I guess, did anyone else have anything to add? Um.
Yeah, so maybe and it just being cognizant of the time, cause that one question took quite quite long. Um does everybody. Feel as though the existing service standards and uh maybe we won't go around the circle, just if you want to make a comment, raise your hand. Um that they are clear and practical for accessibility needs and I'll caveat on to cross number three as well. Included in that a mix of location, so urban, rural, suburban, because we know that we have some individuals here. That live in various parts of HRM. Um do you feel that they also encompass a geographical accessibility? Needs as well too?
I would have to say that I don't think that they are currently incorporate accessibility needs. I think it's very much focused on. How can we do a satisfactory job right now with the minimum amount of money spent? Um and when you typically do that, accessibility is the first thing to go off the the list. And um it's honestly unclear, I think, where accessibility falls within. The HRM's priorities, to be quite honest with you, as it currently stands, if it's high priority. I think they've been missing the mark, cause just based on like specific experiences and you know, whether it be anecdotally or not. Just because an experience is anecdotal doesn't mean it's all of a sudden not valid. With accessibility in mind, those um very likely, most of those scenarios would have not occurred. Right? And I think that's why I'm gonna leave it.
Oliver, I think I saw your hand up. Did you wanna?
Yeah, I tried to do the thumb.
Yeah, I tried to do the thumbs up react because I very strongly agree. Hey, I'm with you.
Thanks, Oliver. Any other thoughts? I mean, I have some thoughts, but I also just talked, so I don't want to talk right away. Yeah, go ahead, Glenn.
Um, well, I will just take the opportunity to reiterate that I think of, I know it's part of emergency management planning as well, but I think. Maybe there should be some prioritization again to those communities outside of the. The city limits where there is only a single road to access the community and so there's only one way to get out through the snow as well. I realize plows can only be in so many places at once and maybe there is already something for those single access roads, but I would I would try to prioritize those. Other than that, you know, I I do have the benefit of having been in on some of these service standard uh discussions before about snow clearing and. So I think my expectations are are quite uh realistic and uh for the most part, from my perspective, they've lived up to that. That's it.
Thanks, Glenn. Any other additions? I'll say it.
Yeah, you have some feedback.
Yeah, I mean, in general, I think that um when it comes to like. Things in the HRM that aren't specifically focused on accessibility, accessibility almost always falls short like within it. Like accessible parking is one like piece that's specifically focused on accessible parking, but the rest of parking kind of like. Forgets about accessibility and so then it it means that we then need more accessible parking, but we aren't giving the resources to it, if that makes sense, like we sort of. Need to think of accessibility as being a part of every component of all of this. And I think right now we're sort of like, well, this is the excessive us piece. So we don't have to think about accessibility on public transport. We just have to think about it from an excessive us lens, or. We don't have to think about accessibility when it comes to all the other parking spots. We only have to think about it when it comes to the accessible parking spots. But if we do that, we sort of like over um over what's sort of like oversaturate a resource that's already limited. Um, and so we really should be making every parking spot um more accessible. We should be making all public transit more accessible. Which is not specifically about snow clearing in this case, but I I kind of make a point without knowing totally like all the ins and outs of snow clearing. But I guess what I'm saying is like accessibility kind of has to be at like the forefront of this, like how are we making the city accessible? For disabled folks or folks who are using mobility aids, but also how are you making the city accessible for people who do not use mobility aids and are. Not disabled and you know, have generally fairly good mobility, but one fall, one slip, one fall can literally cause disability. Uh, and so if we're kind of thinking that like risk prevention, I guess is what I'm getting at. That often accessibility is risk prevention. So if all of that is kind of like. Part of the conversation to start off with, we might be seeing less issues, um, maybe. That's, you know, the goal. I, you know, yeah, it's hard, cause I I know that it's complicated. I know that there's only so many plows that can hit so many roads and I know that there's only so many. So much money in the budget and what have you, but also this is gonna keep happening every year and we're gonna have more like higher and higher rates of disability in this city. If we don't do some sort of risk prevention around it.
You made some really good points about in particular, so earlier today, I actually had a one-on-one consultation with some of the senior leadership in transit because transit. Um, has been identified as a gap, a major gap, in particular surrounding accessibility. With, you know, issues of not being able to get ramps down because of um, you know. Snow that's im- impacting upon it getting down, um, even bus shelters, bus stops, all of those things. So the next question is related to that and I know Jamal that you have your hand raised, but I would really also like to talk a bit about. Specifically related to transit, because um, we've mentioned, you know. Um, folks that need to be at work or be out in HRM that even might not have their own vehicles and that utilize public transit. Um, is, you know, a a big area that we we I think could improve upon. Um, and I would love to hear. So the things I have heard um from a transit standpoint, uh, again, are the ramps. Um, as well as ensuring that there's access from both the front of the bus as well as the back of the bus. Um, so the arch plowing the full nine meters so that you can access the bus. Uh, and then the other aspect is um, we need to ensure that we're clearing all the way up to the curb. Um, so not just that we're removing um so that buses can get in. Uh, right next to the shelter, uh, so that doesn't cause people to step into the street. Uh, is there anything else related to transit that you can think of? Um, and to caveat from the parking perspective, we all are looking at alternate parking locations. There are some that are listed on the website, but they are not currently either funded by HRM or managed by HRM. They're just the private locations that could potentially be available. That are available during any months of the year. Um, there are municipally owned buildings, um, and so I think the problem is is that there are more vehicles. And we we are in perception, we are sort of reducing just in general the size of some of our our streets due to bike lanes, due to various different things. Um, so there's a few strategies with winter parking that we are looking at, but I think the key here would be that we would still. Want to have access for accessible parking spaces above and beyond. But there would be strategies to mitigate some of the parking issues that we have more at a holistic approach.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I have some, based on the thing you just asked, I do have some other thoughts, but yeah, don't want to take up all the space, so um, Jamil, go ahead and then. Other people should also say stuff. This is the the plug, so I'm not just talking a lot.
Yes, sorry, um, I'll make this quick, but. My main concern here is actually two of them. I feel like there is a tone under underlying tone here where the. Province is looking for, or sorry, the municipality is looking for reactive approaches rather than proactive approaches in this. In this um. Data gathering period. And so I would like I I fear that in all in saying this, the province will. Or sorry, again, municipality will look at what is happening and then react to it rather than thinking about proactive approaches to mitigate. What could potentially happen in the future with whatever trends that they are looking forward with. And the second one is. We talk about accessibility in a reactive approach. With regards to winter bans, however, I think like my my concern with that is that this. Puts everything in a into a silo where it's like. We have winter coming up, so how do we deal with winter? But then we don't take a look at how some of these approaches that we take that could solve the winter also could translate into. Our solutions for spring, for summer and fall, right? Like for the other parts of the year. So for example. We talk about accessible parking spots in general, but what happens if we reduce people's uses or need to use cars in general, right? And so all of a sudden, we've offered people a method that of public transportation that could withstand freezing, right? And reduces the the necessity for us to create and to shift around parking spots to look for further accessible parking spots. And then also during the fall, summer and spring seasons, people still have access to. Multiple different locations because now they have access to public transit. But sorry, it was just like a concern that I wanted to bring up and and to note, just because I would like for for a very long time, I always wondered, I'm like. We've had trams and railroads like built over with with pavement in the city for many, many years. And recently, specifically on Spring Garden, they removed those tracks. But those trams don't need as much maintenance as roads and sidewalks do. Right? And they could have been a solution for the winter as well and for other seasons, but specifically for the winter. So I like I wonder like if this conversation is happening in a silo, if we are not considering those others. And I know this is beyond the scope of you. In your in your work potentially in this call, but like something to like just bring up and to and to mention. To see where it could go in the future, but uh, yeah, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Yeah, so unfortunately, again, we are only focused on winter operations and as I mentioned. The in-house staff that are unionized members do come over from other locations of HRM. Parks, roads, um, IMO, um, so they they do work in other locations. The senior leadership is specific to winter operations, so that's why the focus and scope of our activity is winter operations. But I know that uh HRM is actively looking at other avenues to explore to get support um from. Uh, so I mean, these are great questions in a in a different form or setting to say. You know, we were able to have these conversations with regards to winter. We'd love to have an opportunity to chat to. You know, parking or transit in a more holistic way to talk about, okay, this is what it looks like in the winter, but how do we translate that over into other months? Unfortunately, I am not the right person to to chat about that with.
Go ahead, Oliver.
Thanks, uh, I hope I don't cut out here. My connection's been super spotty, so if I do, I'm sorry, but uh. Kind of. But uh, I I I have a hard time finding um like kind of what Rashad was saying about data and statistics and like getting kind of. Uh, transparency to. I know this might turn into like a bit of a snow removal wishlist, but it would be great. Uh, understanding. If these standards are even close to where we're at. Just kind of having those metrics. At least for like, I guess, oh, my brain, my.
Oliver disappeared probably from the same issues that are making cut out.
To respond to his note, um, I I think it was around data collection and having specific metrics and KPIs and. And what is, what are, what's it currently look like? How many issues are we having related to accessibility? To respond to that, or are we meeting our current service standards? Um, to respond to that, that those are items that were identified as gap areas. Um, so they have started to put strategies in place to try and um collect some of that data this year. And we are helping to fill in some more of those gaps. But as I mentioned, I think there will be um shorter term strategies and longer term strategies. And the ability for um, you know, every day, the the road crews are collecting information. Three Room One has collected information, but to be full summit needs to integrate into the other existing infrastructure that HRM currently has. So those will be strategies um that we have. The next question, and this probably would tie into some of the stuff that um Oliver was trying to mention. Is related to getting um more inclusive in integration of of. Groups like yourself or even some uh community advocates surrounding accessibility or residents regarding accessibility. How do we integrate them better to ensure that our service standards are aligned? I know that you are having a town hall um related um and that that would be a great opportunity to get residents' perspective. On uh winter operations. One of the other uh ways that was recommended would be to um. Mandate uh twice a year to be able to have this group chat um or have workshops with the winter operations crew. Um, maybe to allow um a more proactive approach to accessibility as opposed to a reactive approach. Um, and so I'm wondering, is there any other ways that we could make sure that we're integrating? Or that we could recommend uh to the winter operations team to ensure that we're being inclusive of accessibility needs? And when they do have data um and are collecting that information. Um, that it's also translated and being transparent and presented to groups like yourself or to the general public. And Oliver, I'm not sure if you, I see your back now, if you caught some of my response to that, but.
Yeah, I have no idea where I was lost. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and put something in chat out of fear that you'll lose me again, but.
I think uh. Definitely, like, this committee exists for a reason and I feel like sometimes like we get presented with really specific projects and that was sort of like overall, how are we doing? We had to, I mean, it felt like we were sort of like. Begging for the snow clearing folks to come in. I think it was like two years ago now, maybe. I don't know, Elizabeth, if you like, you weren't the the. Person to do it then, but like I think, yeah, it just seemed like pulling teeth to try to get the the um snow clearing, like winter operations folks to come and just like give us a presentation on. What was up, because things were going really bad and we were kind of like, come talk to us, like we have some things to tell you and they were like, we're too busy. So yeah, I think, you know, part of the issue probably was that I was like in February, I was mad and so I put in a request and February is probably not the best time to have that happen. But like pre-winter and post-winters to sort of be like, you know, here's what we're planning, what advice do you have, what things do you want us to take note of, what things should we keep in mind? And like post-winter, like how did it go? Yeah, to sort of just like some more evaluative processes, it seems like is necessary. Yeah, and like to involve this committee in sort of the like, it's the reason that it exists, well, one of the reasons it exists. There's other things that we do, obviously. Yeah, and then, but also like. Like we're all volunteers here. There is a ton of disabled community advocates who do this for work and like do accessibility audits and like it's. Literally people's jobs. And so I think um recognizing that like this is a labor um and we're. Participating in this because we felt it was important, but also like even taking this extra meeting, like some people can't make it because they're at work and not everyone can take the time to do it. Yeah, like recognizing that like disabled people um. Should be paid for their time, I guess, if they're like participating in knowledge sharing to the point of like setting standards and things like that. Yeah, yeah, like it's all good and well to include us in these like nice conversations and things like that. But yeah, and exactly what Jamil's saying in the chat, like involving disabled people throughout the process and that they should be. Paid in the same way that like any consultant would be. Cause there's a ton of like disability consultants, like they also do consultancy work and and they should also be. Paid for their time. Yeah, so I guess that's, I think that answered your question, sort of.
Does anybody else have any other strategies or suggestions on how we can.
Ensure we're integrating an accessible perspective to winter operations. Through throughout the year, not just when consultants are hired to do operational reviews.
I think it should be mandated that um. There are, there are groups within Nova Scotia and specific and within Halifax specifically that are. People who are living with disabilities and advocates uh for people with disabilities beyond just this group here. And I think they should be more heavily involved in the process throughout. And I think I just wanted to re- reiterate that because it's one of those things where. Just relying back on one group will give you a biased response, right? And I think when it comes to disability, disability. A lot of people don't consider themselves disabled because their disability is has been accommodated for, right? And I think part of it is to just switch the narrative on what accessibility and disability is, right? With the current direction of things and the way that things have been going, it's one of those things where it's like, oh, we have this whole plan. Let's review it for accessibility, right? And that is an expensive process and no one wants to go through that. No one wants to pay five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars or whatever number for a report. Only for them to be met with, well, this doesn't meet any accessibility standard, right? So um, I think like. If the municipality is planning on taking accessibility concerns seriously, they should have a dedicated committee. Of people that they are willing to pay or a dedicated group of people that they are involving throughout. You know, not just this process, but like all of the processes that they are going to be like. Bringing up in the future, so that it's brought in from the from the get-go.
I think Oliver has his hands raised. I think Oliver has his hands raised.
Yeah, just on strategies, I don't know how feasible this would be, but um sometimes I personally find explaining my uh restrictions difficult in these kind of discussions. I wish I like in my mind, what I want to say is like, like, I wish I could show you. You know what I mean? Um, in terms of strategies, I don't know if this is within the context of our group, but it would be nice if a disability consultant or like Rupert Basin could like have a walkthrough with the snow removal folks and like physically be able to show them in like an educational and like dialogue type scenario be like this, this is a space that like, you know, leads to X, Y, and Z. Um, because like I know for me personally, like a lot of the things that have been said today, I've been like, yeah, that's super true. I've thought of it. I wish I had like a photo right here to to more clearly explain like what I'm kind of experiencing. Um, yeah, thanks.
Appreciate that, Oliver. I think that that was something that Paul Vino used to do way back in the day. Um, when he was I he was employed actually by HRM or prior to that. Um, so that was actually a recommendation that we've heard before, but I appreciate you reiterating uh about the walkthroughs. Um, and I I think that's a great idea. Um, I know we touched on sort of communication strategies, but uh just getting down to some of the last questions and we've chatted about a lot of them already, so I'll try and sort of finalize out my questions here and open up the floor for anything else uh for the last sort of uh five minutes that we have together. Um, but is there any other ways that you feel um that we could improve communication? Uh, especially surrounding accessibility? And then specific to winter operations.
I like, I mean, and I I'm sure that this is like being done, but um perhaps not to the extent that it needs to, like keeping things in plain language to the point that like, you know, even the way that we talk about like the priority um of like what gets cleared first, I think is not clear because people are like, well, why am I not the priority? Like, I feel like that act like the reason for it actually needs to be communicated a little bit better, like major streets, sure, but like why? Why are we doing this? Because people need to to get to the major street, you have to ambulate or drive or walk or bike on a smaller street. Like people have to get from point A to point C and there's a B in the middle kind of thing. Um, so yeah, I guess like a big part of the of the communication piece has to be like fall also, I don't know, I have a hard time with the communication piece because I'm like communicating stuff that doesn't work, doesn't work. Um, but also I think that the priority piece, I think, is is confusing anyways and and always has been a little bit confusing. Um, and I I think I generally know what it is about, but yeah, I think people need to this is not fair. I don't know how useful I'm being or how articulate I am.
No, this is great. I think, you know, sometimes it's, you know, what like, what are all these standards? What does it mean to say, you know? So there's a few different things that we're looking at from a communication strategy. One is actually to have a rebranding exercise to kind of get something that, you know, they talk about tools like repetition or something that, you know, people are aware of. Um, you and um then they would know, okay, where do I access this? If I need help or I need to do this. Something that resonates with residents so that there is more awareness surrounding the fact that we do have requirements or where do they go if they need some help? Um, the other thing, as I mentioned, more transparency is a a public dashboard. So there is interactive maps and things on the website. Um, but in some of the um and as I mentioned, you know, we have had discussions about ensuring that all of this is adds an accessibility lens if it is presented on a web base. Um, that that it is inclusive as well to that the the communication um includes that aspect as well. But a public dashboard, so you would be able, all of the equipment and all of the fleet currently has technology to enable it to be traced. Um, so other jurisdictions that I mentioned that are included in the jurisdictional scan like Hamilton, if you Googled Hamilton, they have a public facing dashboard, so you can see what has been cleaned already or what areas have been plowed. Um, and so we're in consultation with the communication team at the municipality. There's been some discussions around providing clocks, so people understand about timeframes, um zones. We've talked about communication strategies surrounding parking. Um, and especially if there would be changes or amendments to any of the service standards, what what would that communication strategy look like? Um, so, and I would invite you, I know that, you know, uh, I did provide you the questions in advance. Uh, but sometimes in particular surrounding, you know, creative ideas like communication strategies, you might come up with something later to please send me a note um and drop me a line, or if there's anything else that comes to um after this session, I, you know, Elizabeth, um, I was included on the email, but she also has my contact. Um, that if if there's anything that you would like to share, um, or if there's anything you'd like to share that in a private sort of setting. Um, please, please feel free to either get my contact if you don't have it, or uh send the information to Elizabeth, then she can share it with me. Um, and the last sort of question that I wanted to talk about. Um, we've sort of talked about mechanisms to strengthen feedback and collaboration um already. Uh, but if there's anything else, you know, please let me know. Um. If there was one thing that you could change this winter, biggest like budget doesn't matter. I have a magic wand and timing doesn't matter, even though we're almost into November already. Um, what do you feel would be the biggest and most impactful change that could be made this winter season? So that's the last question that I have. And then I would invite you, if you have questions following your opportunity to respond to that, to please feel free. It's awesome. And maybe for this one, we can go around the circle again.
I'll pull up the, yeah, I'll pull up the speakers list so that it gets to everybody. Um, okay, well, some people have left. Uh, so right now, uh, first up is Anne Sinclair.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, thanks, everyone. This has been really great. Um, I in listening to, I think, um, Jamil and Rochelle and um and everybody else, um, just the ideas of, um, Jamil, you mentioned silos and I don't know if this is exactly what you meant, but um, just the idea of inclusion and which is kind of overused, but speaking with um and involving so many of the other diverse groups that are around um to to just, okay, I guess what I'm trying to say is, um, at least in my experience, um. I work with a group for all my work as a designer. I'm working with people with a diverse range of abilities and disabilities. And when I'm designing anything or making any decisions, I have in my mind those people. And that's my client group and that's, and I just, if I could think of any sort of shift in mentality, I'm probably speaking to the choir here with our committee and maybe to you too, Stephanie, with your work, which a lot of it sounds wonderful. Instead of saying, we're gonna do this and then we're gonna consult with accessibility people is to put the accessibility lens at the very, very top. And I know from my own experience, it works for everyone. It trickles down, it trickles up or floats up every boat up or whatever that is. Um, it's the same idea as power door operators. If you design a powered door operator for for people with disabilities, it's helping, you know, the people carrying their case of beer or the stroller or whatever. So if you design your everything you're doing going forward with winter operations, thinking about groups of people with the maybe the highest needs. Um, in the letter, they mentioned a whole the whole crew of elders and all the di- all the different abilities. Then it's gonna work for everybody. Transit's gonna get better, people, more people are gonna use transit. Then there will be less cars, then the environment will get better. And I think you see what I'm what I'm what I'm getting at. So that's my main uh message. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Really appreciate it.
Well, next on the list is Jimmy Elsino.
Uh, I don't have any closing remarks. I feel like I've said enough. It was great having this chat, Stephanie.
Thank you so much, Jamil.
Uh, next up is Kathy Stevenson.
I really can't think of anything. Sorry.
It's okay, Kathy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Oliver Keith?
You you said magic wand, so I will say that I wish there was a little more uh I guess, thought to the green spaces issue, but I know I know it's it's out of scope and budget and a lot of things, but um I guess if I had to put something more realistic, it would be to kind of uh echo the idea of having a strong focus of having accessibility at the top. Um, and let it float or sink or trickle, whatever, um, somewhere. Uh, I also would just say that um I'm using my magic wands uh just to have the key focus being at the bare minimum transit and the ability to access transit and having that. Uh, Jamil mentioned the old rail cars. Um, I used to work in transit and I think about those a lot. Um, and I think uh having the ability to have safe, accessible transit as your bare minimum um would be uh would be my magic. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Oliver.
Um, next on the list is me. I feel like I've also already said enough, but I I also want to reiterate. Um, yeah, the like accessibility is at the forefront, it will help everybody. Um, yeah, and then and there's something I wanted to say about the communications piece um that like giving information is part of communication, but also getting information is a big part of communication. And so I I think that there needs to be a bit of a focus on like, what are people already saying? And it's probably on social media and it's probably on three one one data and it's like, it's gonna be in a lot of different places. And so yeah, like like listening to the community essentially, I guess, is kind of like the last thing to to leave you with that. The community is talking and they're probably talking on Facebook and wherever. And I know it's like, it's not always super relevant. But a lot of it is, there's always, there's always gonna be something relevant in people ultimately complaining. We're complaining because something's wrong. Um, so as frustrating as it is, I think, to like comb through Facebook comments and see what people are saying about the snow removal, like that's data and that's super important data and it's necessary data, I think. And it's like already been said, it's already accessible in a sense. So, yeah, that's my last piece there.
Thank you so much, Rochelle. Um. Anything else? We've got, you guys did well to keep it to time, one minute to spare. Um, any other questions or concerns? Um, I will, you know, we were on track to present this to council for December second. However, we were just asked to be pushed back to the January date. Um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure any longer because I that was the reason I was speaking to the head of winter operations right before this call. Um, I, but it will likely be the January council session um that we will be presenting this report. So um we are trying to um tomorrow is my last day for stakeholder interviews, so we are preparing a what we heard report as part of our final report. Um, so this session will be included as a stakeholder group that we consulted and what we heard. So a lot of your wonderful feedback will um be included within that, but also will be woven into um, and thank you for all of your great ideas of the top-down approach and your recommendations. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, I know sometimes when you're a little bit on the spot, uh, it's hard to come up with things, or maybe I'll have said something tonight that you wouldn't have thought of with the uh participation guide. Uh, and that will uh you will want to share later. I would welcome you to share it, so. And I want to just again, thank you for making the time. I know that you're volunteers and this was a special meeting outside of the time of your meetings. Uh, Elizabeth, they tried very, very hard to get me at your meeting, but unfortunately, I wasn't even in the downtown Halifax. Um, or available to meet virtually, uh, so I apologize for that, but thank you very much for making time for me.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the work you're doing. It's important. I'm excited that this is even happening, so. Cool. All right, everyone. I need a mover to adjourn the meeting. I'm seeing Jamil so moved. We're good, meeting adjourned.
Thank you so much. Have a good night, folks.
Thanks, everyone. See you next week at the town hall.